You ready?
Madam Chair, we're ready. I think we're on.
So, do I have a motion to return to open session?
Return to open session?
Second.
Um. The clerk will now read the certification of closed session.
Whereas the King William County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded and accorded with the provisions under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, Section 2.2-3712D, Minnesota, Virginia, requires a certification by this school board that such effective meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore being resolved that the King William County School Board hereby certifies to, that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Mr. Farmer?
I certify.
Mr. Wassenberg? Ms. Atkins?
I certify.
Ms. Catlett?
I certify.
Ms. Branshaw?
I certify.
So now we are ready to have our pledge of allegiance and our sign.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the wisdom of liberty and justice for all.
I thank you. Great. Dr. Wagner, do we have any changes or additions to the agenda for tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to you, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the Board. Welcome to those guests that are with us this evening, including my colleagues who are here to support us as well. Thank you all for being here. Hope each of you has had an enjoyable summer thus far, and it's hard to believe that when we get into next week, it's already July. The summer is moving pretty quickly. I do have one brief addition to the agenda and then one comment about the agenda. I'd like to add item 7.4 under Superintendent's Items and occupation recommendations for public spaces in King William County schools. This will be a very brief information item for the Board's awareness. So that's the only change to the agenda. And then, members of the Board, the comment that I had is, we had intended to provide an update to strategic goal number five tonight, but because of the length of our agenda, we'd like to do that at the July meeting, if that's okay? So just, if you were expecting it and sitting on the edge of your seat for that exciting presentation like I am, we're going to do that in July. It's okay, and just in the interest of trying to streamline. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So can I get a motion to approve or accept the agenda as amended?
Motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Second.
To move to properly second, to accept the agenda as amended? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? And the agenda is approved and carries. So next we are up to item number five, our consent agenda of this evening. Our consent agenda of this evening contains, oh, I don't know, several items, many items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Up to item number five nineteen. So thank you very much for that. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
To move to properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. So now we are up to item number six, citizen's comment. And I have our sheet and see none lined up, and I see none in the order standing. So we will move right on to item number seven, our superintendent's item.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Several times each year, as you know, the V S B A produces its recommended policy amendments and new policies to member school divisions for their consideration for adoption. And we have a host of policy amendments that we are recommending. We have a couple of new policies that are required by new state code that we're recommending also, and I wanted to get your feedback on one of the specific policies this evening before, before we, you know, you would vote to approve this as a first reading. But in, before I, before I get to a very specific policy, I'll see if any Board members has any questions about the policies that are there. No questions? Okay. So the, the first item that I'd like some feedback from you is File J C. And so, Mr. Chapman, you may want to pull that up so folks from home can see that. File J C has...
They're all one document. So the second one, uh-uh, the second one right there, and then we'll scroll through the other eight.
Thank you. So File J C, there is an option for school boards to consider, and that is, you know, we do have a process where we allow non-resident students to attend on a tuition basis. This option would allow the Board to extend that opportunity to students who are dependents of deployed full-time active-duty military where students would be staying with a relative, and that relative would be a resident of the, of the county. So in other words, you might have a student who lives in Essex but would like to attend King William because their parents were deployed, and they will be living with a relative who is a resident of King William. So that's, that's an option for the Board to consider. I wanted to get your feedback there. Right now, you have to, you have to actually, you know, you can pay non-resident tuition if you live outside of the county, but this would allow a non-resident to attend who is a dependent of a full-time military, full-time active-duty, active-duty military to attend our school while their parents are deployed.
I approve.
This is just the first reading, so if you want, so you, you like that option? I don't know if we have that at work, but...
I've never heard that option, but I, I think that's a good option.
Brain reading. Yes, ma'am.
I think that's a good option. I think it honors our service people.
Okay. So, so we'll, got that? Okay. And then the other two bulleted items on that cover page, I think, are relatively self-explanatory. And certainly, accept a motion to accept these policies as presented for a first reading, and then we can approve at the July meeting for the second read.
Does anyone want a motion to accept for first read?
Second.
Second.
Move to properly second, that we accept these as a first read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries, and then we will finalize this with our second read in July, in our July meeting. All right, we're moving on to the next item.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. This next item, again, relatively brief. It's our updated Code of Student Conduct, which is a regulation to a policy for the upcoming school year, and the only substantive change that we have made to the, to the broad Code of Conduct regulation is we have incorporated a more full description of the student dress code in the Code of Conduct itself. And so that is, that's it.
Is this also a first read, or did you want this approved tonight? For discussion?
It would be wonderful if you could approve it. It's a regulation, so technically doesn't require Board approval because we have the ability to, you know, the regulations are how we implement the policy, and sometimes that can change, you know, in, in, depending on the circumstances, but feel free to, to approve, and it's, you know, I certainly appreciate it.
It's a pleasure to board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm second. To move to properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I forgot to say aye.
Are you saying aye?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have four ayes?
Yes.
It's eight ayes. The motion has been approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, Mrs. Hutcheson just brought something to our attention. When we, when the motion was made to approve the consent agenda, I think it was audibly made to approve through 5.19. We actually have a twentieth item in there, so whoever made the motion might want to amend that motion to include through item 5.19.
Oh, I just made a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
As presented?
That's what I said.
Okay.
I said, I said it was, we had, but her motion was all...
So we'll let the, let the meeting minutes reflect that the, that the full consent agenda was approved?
Yes, it was. Yeah?
Okay. Thank you. The next, is it on our tagline? And we're going to ask Mr. Chapman to pull up summary information here. I've shared some of this in the late spring, but we wanted to, wanted to share with you the, sort of the final, the final version of the feedback that we received. There we go. Make it a little bit larger. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. So as you recall, we had sent a survey to our staff to participate and asked for staff feedback on the tagline. And I think I'd shared the staff information before, but I have it in here just as reference. But I think more particularly, I was going to share the, the community feedback or the parent feedback, just so that you could see it. So we gave folks a chance to weigh in. So, Mr. Chapman, you can advance if you'd like. We had, you know, broad participation among staff. This is the community information. This is the first time we're presenting this publicly, so we had 121 responses from the community, and it looks like the vast majority of those were parents or guardians. And then, this is where I wanted to compare the tagline itself. And so you might recall, the shortlist of five, engage, educate, and empower was the top choice among staff members, and the second choice was educate, empower, and succeed. You can move on. There we go. And then, so that, the last slide was their first choice. This slide is their second choice. Go ahead, Mr. Chapman. And then, we wanted to compare that to the community. So the community first choice was educate, or, I'm sorry, engage, educate, and empower. And you can see that there's sort of a tie between first and second choice on the first go-around, and then on the question of whether it was preferred, it was actually educate, empower, and succeed that surfaced as the community's preference, second preference, so to speak. Okay. So then, when you, when you take both staff and community, and you add up first choice and second choice, this is the summary that I wanted the school board to see. So engage, educate, and empower had a total of 163, and educate, empower, and succeed had a total of 153. So not quite a landslide, but certainly a clear preference, I think, for what our staff had, had chosen.
Good enough for me.
Looks good.
So in the event that we choose to use and adopt this tagline, we are more than happy to accept comments or questions about this. Engage, educate, empower, three E's, sort of has a nice little ring to it. You know, we've got a three E initiative in the, in the high school and across the state, so that's pretty clever, and you're welcome to make a motion to approve, to adopt this tagline as part of our redesign of our school division brand.
I make a motion to adopt the tagline, engage, educate, and empower.
Second.
To move to properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the, this carries. We are now with the new tagline, engage, educate, and empower.
Okay. Now let the, let the...
Rebranding begin.
The rebranding and the, what's the stuff that you get at Contra? I can't think of the...
Chalkies?
Yeah, chalkies here, yeah, the...
The wagon you can get.
Swag, the swag. That's it. We're going to roll out some swag now. And there, there were some comments, this is an aside, on social media about this whole process. The school division didn't spend any money on this at all, so just want to make sure that, and we'll make sure that the minutes reflect that as well. This was all done in-house, and all that took was time, but we didn't pay any consultants to do this or anything like that, so fairly, fairly inexpensive and affordable approach to what we think is a pretty clever final product.
Well, we approve your Fugel initiative.
Sorry?
We approve of your Fugel.
Approve the frugal. Thank you very much.
It's a tongue twister.
Should I go to the next item?
Yes, sir.
7.4. Item 7.4, we wanted to bring to the Board's attention and for public awareness, and I think what I'll do is read some information here that is in the cover sheet, but just to make sure that the gist is just reflected in the, in the meeting minutes. But recently, we were contacted by the county fire officials because they had received a concern about a recent event that was held at one of our schools where we had a large number of guests in attendance, and they were concerned that the facility may have been overcrowded. And so, on June 10th, Mr. Stone and I met with several county officials from fire and rescue and from emergency management, and we walked through our public spaces in our facilities. Mr. Stone shared with them some of the architect's schematics, and we were even with Mr. Melton, who was a building, he was a building official here in the county. We took measurements and, again, walked through those spaces and had some discussion about some reasonable occupancy limits that those spaces, you know, might be able to accommodate. And then finally, on June 18th, Mrs. Stone met again with Mr. Melton, who's a county building official, and he had recommended posted signage with the following... So, Mr. Chapman, if you don't mind pulling that M L up, scroll to the bottom. So this is for the, the county building official has maximum occupancy levels for the large spaces in our schools. And I will read this aloud, but I'll let Board members and the public have a chance to, to take a peek here. Obviously, none of the elementary schools has a locker room, so there's a N there. But 1550 at the high school for the gym, 800 for Hamilton Homes. The implication here would be for maybe those end-of-year events where a lot of parents would attend. If it's going to be at one of the elementary schools, you know, we're going to have some tighter occupancy limits, so that may mean as we move into the fall years, coming up with revised procedures for how we invite adults to the building. Because, you know, if we've got a program that's going to involve 150 kids, those 150 kids aren't going to be able to bring parents and grandparents and siblings. So we're going to have to, once we post these signs, and we'll work on having these made, we're going to have to adhere to these occupancy levels, but we just want to make sure that our community is aware that what they may have been accustomed to in the past is probably unlikely moving forward. So let me pause here and see if Board members have any questions. And I want to take him along, thank Mr. Stone for his help, and also to thank the county officials for their time walking the facilities with us.
I mean, one idea that popped up in my head while I was reviewing this was what if whenever we have those performances, we take the number of kids, divide it by the occupancy, and then we provide each kid capo tickets or something like that, and then the staff will collect them as the parents come in the door?
Certainly an option.
Numbered.
Correct.
They need to be numbered also.
Yeah. So that could be an option if we come back. And we have plenty of time for this. One of the things that we'll need to be concerned about, though, is when we get to open house, we've got to make sure that now that we are aware that we don't have, you know, a thousand people crammed into the media center at one of our schools. So I think our, we'll make sure that our school leaders are aware of it, that they can schedule and sort of route people accordingly in the school. So open house might be the first event that could, could test this a little bit, but, but we'll come back to it with some more information and some recommendations as to how we might, how we might control occupancy.
I will say, some of these numbers are higher than I thought we were going to get.
Give us an example.
Um, I mean, really, like, for Quentin's Springs, like with the cafeteria and the gymnasium numbers, like, those are higher than I would have anticipated.
Mr. Stone, have you had anything to add?
Yeah, I mean... A lot of numbers came from architectural drawings from the fire, lights, and safety section of that. They, they put occupancy code, oh, sorry, occupancy code and design code. So we got with Mr. Melton at the county. It is a formula that goes into this based on the number of exits and square, square inches of exits.
Yeah.
And we verified that to the drawings, which we came, that's how we came with these numbers.
Yeah.
So I thought the same thing, but yes. But it depended on number of exits you had. So it's exits out the Quentin stage, it's exits out that door, so it's options in the cafeteria, out of the kitchen if you have to, so all that goes into, you know, the way into the calculations.
Yep. I mean, so based off of this, do we know, kind of, so where the complaint came from, we know it was AES. So do we know exactly how many people showed up for that event? I'd be curious to know if we were within the acceptable range.
I don't know. We have... She's going to check it out.
Okay.
And I don't think that this requires any specific Board action, because I think we have to do this, and so we just wanted to make the public aware and the Board aware that you've given us the nod to go ahead and, and proceed with this kind of compliance method. And so we'll do that. We'll make sure we have something in place as we start the year. And I don't, I don't know, do, do we only have to post occupancy? Do we have to post that at every entrance, do you know?
It's only the space, it's only at the seats.
Okay. But I mean, like, like, would we, in, in this space, would we have to post it at that hallway, that hallway, in these doors?
No, you only need to post it once.
Once, at the public entrance?
I mean, it really doesn't matter where you post it, as long as it's posted.
Let's go to the members.
Yeah.
So what, next thing we need to do is make sure that we have, that we're compliant with the size of the sign, and whether or not it has to have a, it might have to have a braille reading on it as well, so we'll, we'll make sure that we, that we follow all the rules there too. But any other questions or comments?
So I, I think I have a response for the Catlett. We have five, 499 students are getting a number checked, but it's not include students that were...
Or staff?
Okay.
Okay. So we were well over.
So 499, and it not include the students with that.
Students or staff. We're well over.
And, you know, this is, it's just, it's good awareness, so we appreciate the ability to chase this down and to make sure that we make it right.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions about those items? Are we ready to move on?
Actually, I'm, sorry, I would like to, whenever we do the student handbook, could we put this in there?
Uh...
That says, like, first, have like a section, like, for school events. Like, these are our occupancies at each school. We, we just kindly ask that you be mindful when attending programs.
I think we can find a way to incorporate that in some school communication.
And I guess it would be better, though, once y'all figure out what kind of route we might want to take, to put it, put that in there as well.
But yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We ready?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to move on to item number eight, curriculum and instruction items.
Madam Chair, I think Davis is on her way up to share some information about the end-of-year data and a little bit of what we've been doing this summer. Welcome, Miss Davis. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Can I use the clicker, Mr. Keegan? Perfect. All right. Well, today we just wanted to give you an idea, share some overall trends that we have seen in our end-of-year data. So we're going to quickly go through that with you and just share some of our summer directions, so a quick overview of what that spring was, share some of those trends as well. Just a quick reminder, I know we've talked about this a number of times, but just want to ensure that the, you all in the public are aware that we've got a new framework to review for DOE, and so just wanted to put that right back out there and then give you guys an idea of our training, our teachers have been participating in, and our leadership as well. And I'll offer some time for questions. So just a quick recap in our spring data. We took the VOWs, Virginia Language Literacy Screening System, three times this year in K through third grade. We saw, in the fall, our data was just kind of a starting point for us to understand where our instruction was. At the conclusion of that fall assessment, we had 211 students high, identified as high risk, and that we had to write 211 student reading plans and provide intervention for those students K through E. As we progressed, we have seen that, as we've had significant gains, one that I'd like to highlight is the work of our kindergarten. In the fall, they were, they were at a 68% high risk, and they went down to 12 by the spring. So we saw really great significant gains there. So we started off at this fall level, about 75% of our students were either high-risk or moderate-risk, which if they were moderate-risk, it meant that we were monitoring their data, and by this, by the spring time, that number decreased significantly. So we're very excited to see that growth continue with our students in terms of reading on the VOWs assessment, and again, that will expand to fourth through eighth grade as we go into this upcoming school year. Any data? Just a really quick, big recap. We, we saw that in the fall, we had the majority of our students falling within one level below or in that red range, which is two to three grade levels below. So we can see, we had a very small percentage of students in the green. If you see that line below the most recent, it says fall. We only had about 12% or so of our students that were one or above grade level. When we took that again for math in the spring, we see a lot of green there, so that is exciting news. However, I think that we still see that, that yellow and red there indicating that we have a good chunk of our students who are still performing below grade level. We still need, we still have improvement to go. We want to see that green expand. We're seeing that growth from fall to spring, but we still have a ways to go, and so I think that's important to note there. We often see that, you know, our students above grade level after that 18% is, we, we would like to see that increase. We need to think about ways that we can continue to support our students who are shooting above grade level, and how do we provide that enrichment and engagement for them as well? And then, we saw a little bit more gains towards that on-grade level. A lot of that helped that we had a core curriculum in our elementary. A lot of that helped that we had a core curriculum and our elementary. So we saw a little bit more growth in reading than we did in math. And we think that's attributed to that explicit instruction that our teachers adopted this year with our core curriculum. So we continue to see that growth. However, we do want to note that, um, this spring data does tell us that we still have a good percentage of our students in that yellow and red risk bands. That brings us to our SOL data trends. We took our SOLs this year, we had some great gains in some areas and some areas that we continue to see a focus for major communities including group one. And so here, I'm providing approximate because our data is not final with DOE just yet. We have raw pass rates. For the DIA, we have not finalized those pass rates and we won't get that information until late this fall. So once that information is provided to us, we'll provide a full update. We did want to give the board and the community an idea of where we were performing. So these are approximates. So if you look at grade eight science, you can see, um, last year we had a fifty-two-point three pass rate. This year we've increased that by about ten points in percentages. Same with Virginia studies. We have a sixty-four percent pass rate. This year we've seen approximately about ten points added to that pass rate this year. So we do have some, some things to celebrate in our SOL data. Um, and that is definitely noted by our, the hard work that our teachers have put in. It is also important to note here that we did have new SOLs that were adopted. However, in social studies, um, remained the same for this year. Um, we tested on the same standards. However, for reading, there were new standards that were tested. And we want to give a shout out to our fourth grade. You showed a significant amount of growth, um, for their reading this year.
I did want to also include, we neglected to put in there notable gains from the high school. And so I just wanted to make sure that we did include the high school. And so with biology, one of the content areas that I wanted to highlight, the twenty-twenty-four pass rate for biology at the high school was fifty-nine percent. And so the change in the twenty-twenty-five, um, increase, again, Ms. Davis indicated preliminary data, um, shows a twenty-four percentage point increase in biology at the high school. Another one is rural one. Last year, twenty-twenty-four, the pass rate was sixty-six percent. And there has been an increase, um, in the pass rate of three percentage points. Um, some of the other areas at the high school, because it was noted, it's titled notable gains, um, a lot of the areas at the high school remain consistent. So the reading and of course remains at eighty-five percent last year. And it indicates that it remains consistent for the current year. Um, so there were a few areas that again, the high school was not included, but wanting to share again there as well. That area remained consistent, so I did include them. But I did want to give those notable updates because if we look at a twenty-four percentage point increase, that's definitely something to be celebrated at the high school.
Any questions about our gains?
No, I'll say this is very impressive. When I looked at it, when we looked at it the first time in the fall, I was seriously worried. Um, but I mean, like, every result has been over a ten percent increase. So I think that speaks volumes. Some are even higher. So the work that y'all were doing is making a difference. So thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're certainly laying that foundation. Rome wasn't built in a day, as we all, you know, we've heard that saying before. So it's, we still have a long road ahead, but we're excited that we're chipping away and we're, we're starting to see the results and the fruits of our labor. So thank you for that. And we still have areas to grow. So of course there are some places for us to, we've seen some declines. And I do want to note here that you will see some reading and math declines. And the things that I'd like to point out for this is that, like I, I mentioned in the previous slide, um, we do have new social studies standards that students will be tested on this year, this, um, or this upcoming school year. For this past school year, it was a cross swap year, so we taught those new standards. It remained to test on the standards that were already in place. Moving into this year, we had new reading SOL standards and new math SOL standards taught and tested on. Which typically, when there are new standards and new SOLs, it's not uncommon to see a little bit of a decline in scores because we are learning the new SOLs and the new standards. However, you know, we still see the need that we, we see some decline and we need to continue to provide targeted intervention. So when we think about our middle school reading, uh, the, the LA will be extending to middle school, will be providing targeted intervention for those students who are performing below grade level. Um, our, the DLA, um, for middle school requires for students who did not pass their SOL in the previous year, they will automatically be qualified for a student reading plan this upcoming school year. So we will already have a group of students that we will, we'd be providing targeted support at the beginning of this school year. Is there anything you wanted to add to that, Dr. Bass? Again, same with math, we saw a decline there. However, with that decline, we continue to focus on pacing of our curriculum. Our math coaches have partnered together to provide that pacing with math departments. They look at, um, providing those consistent assessments across the board on a quarterly basis. And our middle school will be looking to pilot math based.
So we'll have a new curriculum for both the middle school and the high school for math. Um, and so one of the scores that I did want to highlight for that as well, we're on a decline at the high school. Last year, seventy-eight percent. And this year, um, a change or decrease with seven percent. And as Ms. Davis started, um, the middle and high school will have a new math curriculum, but also iReady for, iReady goes through Algebra I. And so what we're going to do next year for the high school to provide additional support in math is to expand, um, iReady to include our high school students that are in Algebra I. So that would allow the teachers to provide students with that diagnostic assessment, but then be able to place them on the individual learning plan, the same thing that's done for the elementary and middle school, so that they receive that individual instruction as well.
In addition, we, um, you know, when we're looking at grade three reading, um, continuing to provide professional learning for all grade levels and finish market advanced, but something that, um, Ms. Wilken and I have been working on is our PE concerning that resource for this upcoming school year. We'll continue to use iReady. And iReady provides us regular, um, professional development as well to help us analyze the data and provide instructional support. So we're going to continue to keep an eye and monitor the progress of our students and provide our teachers with the resources and support, um, continue to make those gains. And then, um, for grade five, math and science, we did see some moderate declines there. Um, so our team, our elementary team has looked at ways that we can maximize that instructional time, especially in that fifth grade area, reduce transitions and reduce behavioral interruptions to hopefully, um, provide more instructional time and increase student engagement. Any questions about?
Ms. Davis, I'll, I'll make one comment if I could. And that, and that is related to the new standards. That's, that's an important, um, it's an important distinction to make because you, schools are not, and, and we're seeing in, and, and a lot of the school divisions and even in some of the regional superintendent's meetings, that, that everybody's experiencing, and it's called an implementation gap. But it also points to a sort of a broader circumstance that we talked about in here, which is alignment, which is making sure that teachers have the most aligned, high-quality instructional materials that they need and that they implement those with fidelity. And, you know, so some of, some of what you've heard us talk about is providing supports for teachers and supports for principals so that principals can support teachers in the classroom. But, you know, one of the areas where we know we can strengthen is alignment. And, um, you know, that's, that, that's going to be a critical point moving forward. Lots, certainly lots of things to celebrate. And I was also going to share, um, from statistically speaking, um, even a three percent fluctuation in, in performance, even if it's negative, if not significant, but especially when there are new standards. So if you see grade five math, they fell three percentage points, but with new standards, that's actually pretty good. Because had they been the same standards, it may have been ten points higher. So, so some of this we have to, we have to look at with some discretion because, um, there's, there's a lot behind these numbers.
Thank you. So we did want to, as you all know, we do participate in the CIP consortium, which is, um, the sixty-five Virginia school divisions. And so this is just a quick comparison. Um, this is the whole consortium's SOL data. And it's important to note that our, our raw pass rates were right in that range of scores that they were seeing as a consortium. So we are not alone in where we are standing and where we have seen our gains and where we've seen our declines. And it is, um, across the board. And so I think that that's also an important, um, piece here to know in our data story that, you know, we work with this consortium and there's other school divisions that look like us, they're a little larger than us, potentially a little smaller than us. And so we're seeing some of the same trends as well. Um, and then additionally, continue to look at our trends. We found, our team found it interesting when we were looking at our SOL pass rates, comparing them to our spring diagnostics with iReady. And our data was pretty, very similar to the data that we saw in iReady. So we're used to that, that red and that yellow. That was, and that pretty approximately pretty close within range of where we were seeing the pass rates of our students in math and reading. So we thought that that was a really great way for us to see that this is a good predictor and potentially a great resource for us to use in the future as we look at preparing for SOLs. If we see this in the spring around March, then we have time before SOL testing, about a month, to really see which skills and areas our students need support in and can maybe help close those gaps prior to assessing in May. And that's the same for reading as well. And then, we just wanted to provide a quick overview. So as I stated before, all of this is very preliminary data. However, we did want to go ahead and get that out there so you all had an idea of where we're standing as a division. Moving forward, we will provide us with our, um, final and most official SOL performance framework. So when we look at this, this is how we will be weighted. Um, so sixty-five percent at the elementary level, sixty percent at the middle school and fifty percent at the high school is based on mastery. And that is our pass rates for SOL. So when we think about where we land in elementary, middle and high, we're going to be weighted pretty heavily on that mastery. However, there will be other components to factor in. Um, growth is still a good chunk of that, um, factor as well. And so we, again, we won't have that information until later. And then you have that readiness, which in fact, when it got sent to you, um, graduation rates and ready for life and that three year mark. So we can, we can, we are working on funding and the schools are working to look at that mastery component. We have an idea of how many points we're receiving for mastery. Um, but the other items, we, we don't have a clear picture of just yet until the year ends. We will be given performance categories. So we're either going to be distinguished, on track, off track, or needs intensive support. Then we provide the divisions with examples of performance categories using our spring twenty-twenty-four data. Um, and just so you know, that where we landed at, um, based off of the SOL data on twenty-twenty-four, we're at seventy-eight points. So we're pretty close to being on, just a couple of points away. Um, but however, if we were reading, um, if this is our performance category for this school year, we would, um, we were receiving additional support from DOE. And that same is true for homes and in high school is on track. Before, we are anxiously awaiting that official data from DOE. So we have an idea of where we're all within those performance categories.
And if, if I can share just one more item about that, there may be some folks in the public that have questions about the term accountability and, um, or I'm sorry, accreditation. And so with this new framework, the Department of Education has separated accountability and accreditation. And so where a school, you know, was fully accredited several years ago or, um, accredited conditions, let's say, that term accreditation also included school performance, but in the new framework, accreditation will only be technical compliance. So things like, do you have enough instructional hours? Do you have enough teachers? Are your, you know, class size ratios, all those sorts of, of, of technical components. So presumably, a large number of school divisions will continue to remain accredited because they're meeting compliance standards. This is, this is where, this is the customary, um, understanding of what accreditation used to be, except now they're going to be performance categories for, to support accountability. So accountability and accreditation are now separate. So we're, like Ms. Davis said, we are, we'll have, probably have to wait until, um, well into September before we have any data to tell us where we are from the past year, which is strange when you think about it. But you, that you have to wait until you've already started the new school year to find out how you ended the prior school year. But, you know, we're up to the, we're up to the task. We can do this.
With that, we just also wanted to share with you, um, the work that our teachers are doing this summer. Um, so as we've shared, there's a, an emphasis on alignment. And when you think about alignment, we kind of think through that design, delivery and assess process when we're looking at instruction. And so we started with that, moving through those lessons. So the division has some lesson non-negotiables that we shared with teachers last year, and that was our first step to ensure that we are following SOLs in our lesson planning, that we are reviewing them, meeting target and clear objectives within those lessons. And the next step with this year is ensuring that there is consistency, that all of the , um, the, the, that they can provide feedback, they can provide tailored feedback when they do walkthroughs and observations. Our coaching and other support staff support grade levels and their planning, ensuring everyone has access to view there. And the new SOL standards are loaded into that power school lesson planner. So we're hoping that it creates a little bit of ease when it comes to planning. They're not having to flip through different documents to review an SOL. It calculates within their, that lesson plan for them. It also helps create, uh, things that are a little bit more accessible and easy to create for our, for our teachers when they are out. So, um, these are the components that we had shared that are the non-negotiables. Again, our admin shared this with the teachers last year. We really wanted to take this to that next step I had, letting this power school planner and our teachers have participated in training this summer to help with that alignment. And this is a free tool that we have been able to utilize as a division. So we're very excited about that. Um, they've done two sessions so far in June and we have one more session scheduled for July. Excuse me, for August when teachers return. We also had AI training that has been delivered by our fabulous ITR teams. Um, so they, the AI training focused on what does AI look like in the classroom, um, monitoring AI so that students are using it appropriately. Resources for teachers, um, how they can use it to help with engagement in their lesson. And then what our, our policy is, as a division, what we expect from our staff and our students when it comes to using AI. Um, we really want to take that approach that we know that AI is ever-growing and that technology is going to be a part of to continuously to keep up with, but I believe it is here to stay. And so we want to ensure that we are providing our teachers with those resources and our students with the resources they can use to use it appropriately. Teachers have three different training opportunities they have to do in June. Um, and they have one that they may attend if they are not able to attend in June, they attend in August. Um, and the feedback from this has been really positive. Our teachers have appreciated this training and they've learned a lot of. and they've learned a lot about AI and how it can impact their classroom. So any questions about our teacher training or offering regarding AI or Power School?
And just so the board knows as well, that the Department of Education sponsored statewide AI training for all school divisions. And so we had a team that participated among other school divisions in Region Three throughout the year. I think there were three or four, maybe four or five regional sessions where our team would go to Spotsylvania and meet. So you know, 150 people in the room led by a professional facilitator. And it really, you know, I think when people think about AI, they think, oh, students are going to use it to cheat. And it's really much more than that. And at an upcoming meeting, we'll have our ITRTs and maybe even some teachers share a demonstration of what, an appropriate use of AI in the classroom. And it's fascinating of what it can do. And it really is, like my colleague said, it is going to change what education looks like in the next few years. And we've got to sort of hold on because AI is adapting faster than we can adapt. So we either have to embrace it and figure out what it means or you know, some of our kids might get left behind. But the point of this initiative was to help school divisions understand what it is, what it does, and its potential so that we can teach kids an appropriate use for AI in schools.
So we've got all our summer teacher activities, but we don't want to forget about our lovely leaders. We have engaging and had a few different trainings and meetings throughout the summer. Our team participated in the EduCimer training. So the EduCimer is our data warehouse. That training really focused on how we can use that platform to help us make data-driven decisions for our students. We get a whole picture of a student from academic students to behavior. It also runs helpful reports regarding attendance, behavior, and academics in terms of assessment. So we are able to pull a percent of students who are absent on any given day. So that is something we're excited to help our school teams to have that data at their fingertips and be able to drive not only their school decisions, but some other decisions to best fit their students. We also had our HR leadership meeting back on June 11th. We were excited. It was a meeting for us to kind of wrap up the school year, have some celebrations, and begin thinking of what the school year will look like. The team also participated in the CERN Leadership Retreat last week, which was a very powerful conference that highlighted mental health and wellbeing. Also talked through different strategies to support students with IEPs, to build explicit instruction for students with IEPs. It was a good leadership conference. Our assistant principals and principals are participating in the JMU Virginia Principal Support Program. And they've, right now, our assistant principals are participating in a PD session. They will also go back in July and will continue to get some free professional learning for leading leadership. And then we, our special education team is participating in the T-TAC workshop on July 30th, focused on specially designed instruction and supporting special education within their schools. And that is a team that is designed specifically for leaders. We're excited that we have these opportunities to continuously grow in their practice. Any questions about those activities?
Been busy.
Busy summer.
Thank you. Good information. Thank you. Dr. Bassett is sharing next.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Bassett is here to share a little bit of information about the new cosmetology program at the high school that we're excited about, as well as an opportunity to partner with some of our friends in the town of West Point. So Dr. Bassett, thanks for being here.
Thank you. As previously shared in another board meeting, King William County Public Schools, and specifically King William High School, will no longer partner with an outside agency. We're pleased to say that we will bring those course offerings for cosmetology in-house to the high school. And students will gain that theory and practical knowledge by an instructor at King William High School. What I'm here today specifically for is conversations have started with West Point Public Schools to discuss a partnership where they would like two of their students, they currently partnered with the same vendor that we did, and they would like to have two of their students to join our cosmetology program at King William High School. And so in those initial conversations, we discussed enrollment criteria, space availability, scheduling logistics, transportation, safety procedures, as well as shared expectations regarding the use of logistical information. How would that look at King William High School? How would it look for West Point students? When would the students travel to King William High School? And just kind of that's the conversations that are taking place now. Dr. Wagner, as well as the West Point Superintendent, also agreed upon a tuition rate for those two students for the 2526 school year and the amount of $3,500 for each student. And so our next steps in the process would be to develop an MOU to share with West Point outlining the expectations for King William, but also outlining the expectations for West Point Public Schools. And specifically, of course, we said, we're logistic, but making sure that the students understand the fees, student devices, transportation. More importantly, thinking about the term for the MOU and how frequently that would be reviewed. So including in that MOU, a section for termination of the agreement. And we wanted to make sure that we included those things in there because as we think about our program and how we would like to grow the program, we would always want to make sure that we have a correlation for our King William students first. And so we just want to make sure that we're including how frequently the MOU would be reviewed, but also the notification that we would like to appropriately and respectfully give to West Point when the MOU would no longer be in effect. So we would just like the board's permission and approval to move forward. Especially in place, we just want to make sure that we have the approval of the board to move forward. And again, just to state one more time, for the 2526 school year, we're off the two students.
I mean, I honestly think I need more information and like the logistics of it and how it will impact our kids in the future. So like, they're asking for two now, but then what happens next year when they want more? And then I know that you need at least, I think, two years or three to be certified in cosmetology. So that would configure the term of the MOU. But I mean, I just, I need more information on it.
And we could provide more information, but just kind of for the two students that are incoming. They are two new students. And the number of hours that are now needed for cosmetology has decreased. And so a student couldn't finish the program within two years. So if we're thinking about the term for the contract or the MOU, it would be two years. And again, to your point, one of the reasons why I highlighted both the term, but also the termination of the agreement is because we would always want to ensure that we are considering the requirements in place for our King William students first. And so with the MOU, we would definitely put language in there about our program following, but also the notification that would be provided to West Point should we need to terminate the MOU. What's the current number of students that are interested in cosmetology based off of the survey we provided? I want to show those numbers.
I'll tell you one, we currently have 30 students that have registered in cosmetology. Cosmetology two and three is a total of, I believe, eight or nine students. That would take that. So they're looking at having four sections of cosmetology one, and then one section of cosmetology two, the second part that will walk through to our requirements for cosmetology.
And how many students can we accommodate in a class?
So that's about as much as I can.
Okay. So with these, the 30 students who have the new interest, like, would they all be able to participate currently if we had to, several different classes?
So can they be hired as a cosmetology teacher?
Yes. Okay. And you said these two students are like brand new? So they actually?
They would go in the section one?
And so just to think about one of the reasons we're bringing the program in-house. When we partnered with our outside organization, we had a map of 10 students. Bringing the program in-house would allow us to service more students who have that interest based on the surveys and cosmetology.
And that's $3,500? Y'all figured $3,500 per student for cosmetology?
Yes. And I was going to share, if there's, if you still had a question about it. I don't think this is, we are yet at a point where it would be like one of our partnerships with Bridging or with Chesapeake Bay, where you sort of purchase the seat, you know, for a period of time. Like at Chesapeake Bay, we purchased, we purchased seats over the, like a two or a three-year period. And if we have a student that drops, well, we still have that seat that we're paying for. This partnership may get to that point, it may not. You know, these students might be here for half a semester and then say, you know, this isn't for me, or they may drop after one year. So we're not yet at a point where West Point is purchasing seats for three years. We could get to that point. But one of the things that we would say to our friends in West Point is, if you're going to have two students start this year, we'll guarantee them two seats in year two. But we also need to make sure that we have our enrollment taken care of. So in year two, I'm just going to put a, but let's say we had one class in year two. We have a cap of 20. We would guarantee the West Point students two seats. And then we would have 18 seats for King William. Well, let's say that King William had only 15 kids that wanted to continue to Level Two. So then potentially, you'd have three additional seats that you could offer to West Point.
Yeah.
If they had, if they had students that were ready for Level Two. But I think the pipeline starts with Level One. And so that's why I think Dr. Bassett indicated we would do this year by year. But just make sure that our MOU had the language in it to allow us the flexibility to offer additional seats if we had them. But the priority would be to King William High School demand first.
I mean, I just would be hesitant to accept because in that view, like, if we have these kids start, I mean, this is like a career class. And then we just say, oh no, sorry, we don't have room for you anymore. Those kids just wasted time. And now they're going to have to go outside to make up the other two classes. Like, I just, I don't want to set these kids up for failure. But I also want to make sure our kids have the opportunity as well. So I mean, I think if we're going to agree to it, then we're going to have to make sure that these kids that are signing up can take one through three.
Yeah, because I think Ms. Ward indicated we have the space now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can, we can, and that's why the year over year, until we build a program where we might want to sell, where we might want to offer a certain number of seats every year. We have the same issue with the vendor, right? We had 10 seats, but we would only, we're going to continue this year. So there were only two seats available to King William for the coming year with the outside vendor. So I think we can easily make a commitment to West Point that we will help these two students make it all the way through. But year over year, we'll look at the availability of other seats based on King William's enrollment interest. So we can, I think we can make that guarantee without a problem because we have the, we have the capacity now.
And I was also going to add, as Dr. Wagner said, it's very similar to working with the vendor. Because we only have 10 slots now, after we sit down and think about the MOU and how that should look and meet with the attorneys, we may say that West Point would always have a cap of five students to ensure that we're able to accommodate our King William students. So if we capped at five, then we're being fair to them, but also ensuring that we would always have enough slots for our King William students. And so we would want to make sure we're being fair to ourselves, but also being fair to their students as well. Because as you indicate, it is a career path for some students. And if we look at it and we say, okay, the MOU needs to be three years so that students who are starting can complete the program, then we can make sure that we look at it that way as well. But that still would not stop us from having language in there that in the event that the MOU needs to be terminated, that we would provide X amount of notification by a certain date while in advance of their planning so that they're able to look for someone, another organization, vendor, or partner as they had to do this year. But again, we can bring that MOU back once we.
So I guess what we're looking for is approval to pursue allowing two West Point students to at least start our program. And we can guarantee them two seats all the way through. And maybe it's only two. But like Dr. Bassett said, maybe if, if we do have space in our program where we could offer at a certain point, let's say it's, you know, it's, I'm making this up, but it's by August 15th, if there's an available seat because the King William demand might be down, that after that date, or after, you know, after the drop ad date, that a seat could be offered to a West Point student. That's language that could go in an MOU as well. So we're not going to, I don't think we're going to disadvantage anybody because we currently had a lot of initial interest in cosmetology. I think when Ms. Ward presented before, there were over 100 students that expressed some interest. But even if, even with a full-time teacher, we can't serve 100 students. So when kids have, when kids figure out what their choices are and whether or not that's a first choice, or a second choice, or a third choice, how the master schedule shakes out is how it shakes out for a given year. And it looks like, at least for this year, that we have the capacity to offer a few seats to West Point. And there's a little bit of financial benefit to this.
Will we review an appropriate MOU for this? I'll wait till then. But y'all feel free to vote if you want.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the arrangement for this year for two students. I don't have any worries about this at all.
There's no worries this year.
Yeah.
But there will be the next years.
For which students?
There could be concerns for the next two years.
For which group of students?
For just any. I mean, if West Point's like, oh, this is going great. We're going to see if you can, you know, take these five students and however many you cap it out, like, there will eventually come a time where that's five seats that our kids aren't going to be able to fulfill. So like, what if our interest continues to grow beyond the 30? Like, that's my concern.
Well then, but that's the point of the sort of, the point.
So like, what if our interest continues to grow beyond the thirty? Like, that's my concern.
Well then, but that's the point of the sort of, the, the, the point of at least getting started, that we could do an annual review or a biannual review?
I don't like that, though, because if we do that, then what if we review and we say, this isn't working for us, West Point, we have too many interests, we're gonna change it, or we're gonna do away with it? Like, I don't think that is fair to those kids that are starting the program this year.
I, I think, I think it's always gonna be.
I'm really too old to thank Mr. Stone.
But actually, we, we, we sort of have that now with Chesapeake Bay and with Bridging. We have limited availability because we've purchased seats. I think we're looking for a commitment, even if we just said today, we're looking for an initial commitment to help two students from West Point. And we can cap it at that, if you'd like. And it wouldn't, it, and it's, and it's not gonna influence any of our current enrollment at all. And next year, those level ones students would go to level two. And so presumably, if we cap it there, we have a full opening for level one for King William kids.
That's, that's the way I see it.
In the whole process, I'm just saying there will always be something that pops up.
But, but that happens now with our other satellite programs.
So at the moment, it appears to me that they are looking at, um, SaaS is looking for level two.
Agree to the two students?
Uh, no, yeah, well, yeah, two students. Agree to support the, um, partnership with West Point. And then they will develop an MOU and go from there. So the question is, do we support the partnership with West Point? Or do we wanna postpone it and wait for further information?
I'd like to wait for further information. I would, I wanna think that our students are being served, but that we aren't cutting these students off at the knees. And I think that it is, or the community and other students have felt that way with other programs, so I want to make sure a cool plan is in place, to make sure it doesn't happen.
Alright, so you don't have a vote, there's two. Can we revisit this in July, or when you have a draft of the MOU, with the logistics worked out?
Yes, we can revisit it in July.
Okay.
And so we revisit it in July. And we're working with the attorneys to craft and draft the MOU. It will be with the two students in mind, and making sure that we are including some of the language. If I may ask a question for clarity, when you all say logistics, could you explain what you mean when you say logistics?
I want to make sure that these students don't complete level one and then be told, sorry, we don't have space for you. So I'd like to ask from West Point.
You can, because you're gonna be going to the next, so you're starting at level one. When you go to level two, that's gonna be the same kids from level one, so level one will be completed.
Ideally, but this is tough, and I'd like to see it in writing, so that we can not hurt these students. We, we are held to our end, but they are as well. But if we commit to these two students and they wanna complete cosmetology one through three, we are gonna honor that part.
And I'm telling you, we'll make sure we honor that part.
Yeah.
In the MOU.
And then, as our needs, I wanna make sure our students are served first and foremost. But I don't want another student, whether they're from West Point or to level two, be cut off at the knees halfway through because someone showed interest that we didn't anticipate, someone wants to pick up where they left off two years ago, or something like that, and there could be a million different situations. But I want, want those students to think that they're going down a certain path, and then, sorry, we can't fulfill that.
Thank you for clarifying, but I, I just wanted to make sure I understood, because again, it's the same thing. We're preparing, and the MOU that will be developed would be including those two students, as well as the planning with the current students who are showing interest. As we get to, this is for twenty-five, twenty-six, as we get to twenty-six, twenty-seven, and the high school completes their course selections, those starting students that are in the program for cosmetology one, you may have ten who decide, I don't want to participate, which those ten slots are now opened up in addition to others for more students. So we can create a plan, I just wanna make sure that we're all thinking the same way. We can create a plan, but it's going to be, we're playing for our current year, we're also thinking, thinking that is what we would be doing. Um, but just making sure that, as Dr. Wagner's saying, with our cover school bridging, um, and even if we look at the ten slots that we had, we do have students who can those programs, but they don't continue. Um, as much as we, I think, definitely for Chesapeake Bay, our school, parents do not have a form or commitment, but there would not be a similar form or commitment, um, of completing all three years for cosmetology. Parents are signing that agreement, but there's no way that we can determine who's gonna continue in the program and who's not, because it would be stupid to show us.
Right, and like, as like your example of people dropping, we could have people move into the district that need to pick it up, so those numbers are uncertain at all times.
Okay, we could, we can bring that back, that's, that's no problem.
So when I mention logistics, I wanna know who's providing the transportation? What the thirty-five hundred dollars includes? Will we add a three percent increase year over year to account for supplies increasing? So material supplies? Um, and then, transportation costs, right? And like I said, my concern is not moving into this year, it's about the level one growing drastically, because I have a feeling that's what will happen in the years to come. Um, so, I mean, I would say if a class holds thirty, then, I mean, I would say, like, have the cap of five, or whatever it is, but, oh, sorry, a class of twenty. Um, but then I want to make sure that, like, what happens if we have, you know, forty next year that are interested just from King William? Will we still, could we add five work stations, or have some type of rotation in the classroom to still be able to give those students an opportunity? Um, so I mean, I completely understand the cap, I know how the line of speech is for Bridging and everything else. This is different because this is ours. Um, so that, you know, my hesitation in the years to come, but the rest I'm okay with.
The cap is a state-penanted cap, um, for the instructor, so it's, it's capped for the state at twenty students per instructor in the class at one time.
Okay.
If that helps with clarity.
Well, can it, can it be year to year as far as, like, new students starting? So once that first year is over with, and they go to a second year? And say, the two students are in the second year. Next year, will we go for filling year one again, and say there's twenty King William students? Can we do it year to year, saying, well, those two original ones are still taken care of, but we're not adding any West Point students to this class? To this.
Yes, yes.
I would argue, number wise, we don't even know until the second week of school, truly the numbers, because six months ago, we were talking about a hundred and two students, and today we're talking about thirty-nine. So, I mean, number wise, until they're in there and doing it, we just, there are too many variables.
And that number difference comes from the students that were interested versus the number of students that requested the course and took out the application.
Yeah.
And which we'll always see a discrepancy when, you know, they're interested, but then you have to think about what is happening to take, how many other classes they wanna take.
Right, and then two weeks in, I'd like to drop it, or maybe I wanna, so, two weeks in is when we really get our number.
So, we, we have a, an ability to move forward with offering two West Point students to start level one?
I'm fine with it.
And I'm fine with it, but I think that these two are not.
Well.
I'm fine with.
I'm fine with the two this year.
Yes.
But then, next year, we need to figure out based off of our interest, that West, it's clearly communicated to West Point that depending on the interest of our students, with like, the nine-hundred-and-nineteen homes that are coming, that we may not be able to continue the partnership next year.
This may be a one-year thing, or a three-year thing for two kids.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I think we can spell all of that out in the MOU. We just wanna make sure that we can do it, that we, that you give us the permission to move forward.
I'm fine with this year, but I do wanna review the MOU before it's all proposed.
Okay. Do you wanna, yeah, is there a motion to approve the proposal?
Second.
So moving to properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it approved.
Thank you very much.
First, please.
Thank you. We'll, we'll bring the, for the July meeting, we'll bring.
We'll do our very best to get that, yep, I've got, I've got a note to get on that. Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Lucas.
Uh, I've got one item, uh, before we talk about budget. FY twenty-six budget amendment for nutrition, we did one last month to finish out twenty-five, but, um, Ms. Harris wants to go ahead and be able to order a minivan for her department, and some equipment for the different cafeterias, that if we can go ahead and get an additional appropriation, perhaps by twenty-six bu, uh, budget, we can get that ordered this summer, so she's prepared to start the school year. So we're asking for an additional appropriation, um, of a hundred and ten thousand from her fund balance, no local dollars needed, um, to get that moving.
Alright, so moved, or I'll make a motion to approve the act.
Second. So moving to properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's approved.
Because I can go.
You're welcome.
Who's up next?
I think it's us, yeah, we can do it together. Uh, the next item is an FY twenty-six budget update, and we've got a, a few slides that we wanna share with you. We've got printed information at your seats for the board members, but we wanted to share with you some recommendations for staffing that conform to the school board's adopted budget that takes into account the changes that we had to make based on, uh, the county's approved budget. And so, uh, Mr. Chapman is here to help, help us with the slides, a little bit of background information, that you saw this at one of our last meetings, that on March twenty-fourth, the county administrator proposed an additional seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand for, uh, King William County Public Schools. That was less than the one-point-one-two-eight million dollars that we had requested. And we'll let Mr. Chapman get us going here for what, but I'll ask him to advance the slide. So we had to, we had to remove, um, and maybe we'll do one more slide, just so the, the slide that you, that the public can see is a request that we already have incorporated into the approved budget. It's the next slide that I'm gonna ask him to advance to, so that we can share what our recommended adjustments are to conform to the revised appropriation from, approved appropriation from the county. So we'll let this come up so that it's, it's facing the group here as well. So, the crux of the whole, uh, discussion was, we had, um, some, some requests that we incorporated into the approved budget, and then we had some remaining requests that we felt were priorities that we, that we asked the county to support. And that totaled one-point-one-two-eight million. So the county asked us to, if we would reduce that request to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And so, Mr. Chapman, if you'll go to the next slide. This is a slide that includes our recommendations for how to go from one-point-one-two-eight to about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And so, if the slide, a little bit more information on here, it's a little bit harder to read, but let me pause for just a moment, and I'll go over a few of the, of the changes that you'll see in red text. So this was our remaining priorities, and the first item, which is, which was a delayed position for safety and communication. You may recall that we received a state security grant for a school security lead position. So we believe that we can, um, we, we're, we're gonna take advantage of that opportunity with grant funds, and, uh, the only cost to the division is, uh, the match, the match component for that, which is fifty-seven thousand. So you'll see, uh, on the right-hand side of this chart, you have two columns. One shows the original approved amount, and then the right-hand column shows the adjustments that we are recommending to get to about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So we have, um, we have the ability to fund school security officers also to a grant, but we're required to have a local match there, so that's why you see that amount that originally we had requested about a hundred and seventy-six thousand from the county, but we now only need ninety-one thousand eight hundred, and so that helps that request come down, you know, by about eighty-five thousand dollars.
Now, are the grants, are they yearly grants? Or?
They are yearly grants that are typically sustained for, uh, three to four years. Yeah, so you, so the school division reapplies, in the same way that the county reappears for the, uh, SRO grid.
Remind me about the safety and communication director position again?
We had, we had removed that from FY twenty-six and put that in FY twenty-seven. But when we received the state security grant to fund a lead security position, we're gonna take advantage of that and hire a lead, your lead SSS.
For fifty-seven thousand?
For fifty-seven. That's the match. That's what we're.
So they'll be in charge of all the school security officers?
Correct. He or she.
Thank you. And then what is the private day tuition increase for Phazon School?
So, Phazon is a school for autism, and they are increasing their tuition amount above the re, above the state-approved reimbursement rate. And so the school division, West Point and King William, each have to pay a proportional amount of that increase.
I remember, sorry, thank you.
Okay. So if you look on the, on the, the right-hand two columns, just to summarize this, I think we can, we can justify, the original approved request was for an additional one-point-one-two-eight million. And you can see the adjustments that we've made over there. We have, we have put in a placeholder for another kindergarten teacher, anticipating additional kindergarten enrollment. We have included a STEM teacher at Cool Spring, you can see that in there. We have the unexpected private day tuition increase that we're required to pay.
And we can verify that all of the students are King William residents.
The students?
Yeah.
Which?
For the Phazon School, like, the kids that are being serviced, yes.
And so one of the other discussion items that you can see here that we have removed from the request is the first phase of the ESS transition.
That makes me sad.
Now, I, I will say, so, but, but before I, before I go there, um, all of those changes reduced us to eight-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five. But on the slide, you also see, we can find, we can realize another seventy-six thousand dollars in savings, because we reduced the behavior support specialist from two positions to one. So we can get our total request down to seven-sixty-six-one-seventy-five, and the difference there between that and seven-fifty is. And the difference there between that and 750 is.
16,000.
We feel like we can accommodate for that without.
Yeah.
Without problems. But back to ESS, one of the things that we need to do is we'll need to wait until, like Mrs. Atkins was saying earlier, the first couple of weeks of school. Because let's say that our enrollment increases by 100 kids. Well, we'll get a lot of state revenue for that, but we'll also have to invest in some additional teachers. But once we start our new budget year, we'll be able to align, um, the staff that we have with positions, where we have to put everybody in the, in the, in the right spot, monitor our enrollment as we approach September 1st. And if we realize, are able to realize any personnel savings that might be, you know, because we budget, remember, for a year 10 with a master's, but the person that you bring onboard might be year two with a bachelor's. Um, so they, they may or may not take, um, the full benefits that we have. But if we are able to realize some savings, there, it may be possible to consider the first phase of a transition even mid-year. Or be able to prepare for it. I know that we have a contract with ESS, but we would at least be able to make some sort of commitment, you know, if we, if we wanted to do it. We do think that that's in our staffing best interest over time is to bring our air professionals back into the King William fold. I think it's going to help with recruiting. It's going to help with retention. Um, I think it provides benefit for the employees in terms of, um, you know, retirement. So, you know, lots of reasons why we want to be able to do that. But I, I believe that we are still going to need a commitment from the county to be able to sustain that once we start it. And we talked about that in the spring and that we think, you know, reasonably, we might be able to do it over four years. But, um, we just think it's the right thing for us and it's the right thing for our employees as well. So let me pause there. I, I tried to summarize this as, as quickly as I could. But, uh, with the, with the recommended adjustment that we've made, we go, we, you know, gone from the original 1.128 down to 766,175. And we think that we can move forward with this pretty comfortably if we have the board's support. And if, and, and if you support this, then we can get that STEM position posted right away.
Yeah. Do you need to send this back to the board for final approval?
Well, you already have an approved budget. What, what we're asking is for your approval for this configuration of how to spend that, spend that.
So the 16,000 we would pull from reserve?
Or? I think we'll realize that in savings elsewhere. Go ahead.
I'll say for 16,000, I think once everything is in place, we'll have attrition savings of that amount. That we can easily cover that.
So what if we need to add additional items? What would be a comfortable range to make adjustments? Like if we wanted to implement one of the other items on here in addition to the 16,000 that we're going to be taking?
I think that's where we go back after school starts and see where, what our numbers are to make sure our enrollment matched what we set the budget on. Um, and see, once I got some, the final hiring phase out and see where there's numbers fall out. And then I think at that point, we can, if there's anything else that we can phase into the budget process.
Thank you.
But I think if you try to incorporate the feedback that you gave us from the last couple of meetings and the things that you would prioritize, we kept behavior support in there. We've got the ability to do school security officers, which is fantastic with the grant funds that have really helped out quite a bit. Able to keep the STEM teacher for Cool Spring. We'd love to be able to get that posted right away. So we feel pretty happy.
Okay, thank you. Good work.
Thank you. So we need to adopt this approved, um, it would prove.
That was just discussion.
I didn't, I didn't.
We can make a motion.
I, I, I didn't look at the, what does it say?
I had it.
Okay, okay. Disinformation. We don't need to do anything. Okay.
If, I think as long, we, we can let the meeting minutes reflect that the board supported our adjustments and we can move forward.
I think that's an accurate statement. We support that, right? Yeah, we support that. You get all for it. It shakes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lucas. All right, so are we ready to move?
For Ms. Harris.
To Ms. Harris. Ms. Harris, we still cold.
Actually, I'm not cold anymore.
I am. We're comfortable. That's because it's.
I'm so cold. I hope you come bearing amazing news.
What amazing news?
Well. What you got, Ms. Harris? Super amazing news. Um, but our, I mean, our negative balances are still relatively high. However, our senior negative balances came down to only 73 dollars and some change. Um, we had a few inactive and withdrawn accounts, um, that I had to invoice the district for. And it totaled, uh, 1,370 dollars and 37 cents, which is in, a lot lower than what it originally was when I started reporting. I'm sorry?
Turn it down.
As of June the 5th, it was 25,571 dollars and 72 cents. And, um, we recently started, um, sending out correspondence to families of inactive students or graduating students that had positive balances on their meal account. Um, because once we communicate with them several times over, um, a specific timeframe, if they do not request a refund or authorize the transfer of those funds to another student's account, then that money then becomes the property of the school nutrition department to be used towards negative meal balances. And surprisingly, I've received several that have, um, given the funds that were on their graduating seniors' balance, um, to go towards negative. They, they donated them. So I've had several that have come in to do that. Some of them had transferred them to other siblings that are in the house, household, which is fine because then it gives the opportunity for the money to be used and not just sitting there. Um, so we do have, we do have quite a few, uh, holders that are just sitting there. And, but the first correspondence has just gone out to the parents a few weeks ago. So I'll continue to follow up with that. And hopefully we can be able to use some of the money that's just sitting there on inactive student accounts to pay out some of the debt. But, I mean, 20,000 is a lot lower than some other districts. I'll tell you that. It's a lot lower, so. Any other questions?
Yeah, ma'am.
Turning the information that I provided. Just a little highlight. I kind of shared some information with Dr. Wagner earlier. Um, last Thursday, um, I took two of my managers down to Mecklenburg County Public Schools. They're in the process of building some new schools and they're getting some new equipment. Obviously, they're getting all new kitchen equipment. Well, the equipment that they have now is only three years old. So they have serving lines that are just years old and they are top of the line serving lines. So you can now take a look at them and see if they could potentially work for a Quentin in Cool Springs. Because a Quentin's serving line, it needs to, it needs to be updated. It is, it's very out of date. So they have individual serving lines. They have six that are available. If you purchase them, and I'm working with Mr. Stone to make sure that we can do it electrically. I know they'll fit as far as like size, size, um, to make sure that our electric panels can handle the upgraded equipment. Um, we can get them for 5,000 dollars a piece. So I can get six units for 30,000 dollars. I attempted, I got a bid for a Quentin, at a Quentin only. It was over 150,000. So if you factor that into two schools, you're looking at over 300,000 dollars if I were to purchase new serving lines for both schools. If it works and I can get all six of them and do both schools, dollars. 75,000 dollars savings. Um, so, and they're really, really nice. All the belts and the plastic. They can either go hot or cold. So they're, they're top of the line. They're beautiful. So working, like I said, with Mr. Stone and, um, with Robin in Mecklenburg. And then getting them here and that'll be the next quick turtle. I'm excited. I'm excited. Kind of like news.
Oh, ma'am. Thank you. I hope you can get that to work. All right. I have number 11. A closed session is necessary. I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Thank you.
I have number 12, personal report and supplemental personal report. Can I get a motion to approve?
To approve the personnel report and supplemental personnel report as is presented.
Second.
Move to properly second, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? And that motion carries. They are approved. So now we are at number 13, matters from the board. Do any of board members have any, um, matters that they would like to share with the board tonight?
Well, Tony's disappeared, but he clearly has been working on a lot of different things pretty diligently over the summer. So thank you. Good work. We appreciate you.
He's fixing a problem right now.
And we appreciate all of our school custodial staffs and maintenance staff for, uh, the work that they've done this summer. It's difficult to work in this heat, but we've got folks outside as well. And, uh, just really appreciate everybody, um, helping us out because we've got a lot to do and we're, um, grateful for all the support that we have.
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay. Anything else? Okay, so, um, public announcement. Um, we're going to start off with the school board will be in a school board governance retreat this weekend on Saturday, June 28th, from 12 to 4. That sounds about right. Is that the right time?
I thought it was 5, but, okay.
The 5?
I thought it was 30.
Oh, it's 30.
Well, 12 to 4:30?
Whenever we're done.
Whenever we're done. Whenever we're done. We're going to be in a governance training, uh, all of us on Saturday, the 28th. And, um, I know that a, a, a letter went out, an email went out. And I hope that some of my board members are planning to join me at the BSBA Conference on Education on July 25th. I'd love to have y'all there with me if you can. We know that school offices, they're going to take a holiday. Woo-hoo, right? So it's the holiday of July. Fourth of July coming on, um, that's a Friday. Well, that's not really a good day for y'all though, is it? Because we're off on Fridays. We're off on Thursday. So school board offices will be closed Thursday, July 3rd, and Friday, July 4th. And then our next school board meeting will be July 15th. Uh, with the closed session beginning at 5, open session at 6. Is there anything else? Here is something else I'll call for my motion to adjourn. Come in.
Second.
Move to properly second, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks for everybody.